Okay, let's call the May 14th meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time, at six o'clock. And first of all, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Well, I think we still have to do a second reading on the Acton School website and also on the Acton School Department Law Plan. We left that since March and we didn't, reading the minutes from last month, we didn't do a second reading.
Okay. So what are those again?
Well, it was IJND, the Acton School website.
IJND.
D, IJND, R. I mean, there's a whole, some of the other letters didn't all come out, but it's all the same. Oh, IJNDB, the Student Computer Internet Use. Students on Email Confidentiality and Record, IJNDB-D1.
IJNDB.
DB-D1.
DB1.
Yeah. Website Guidelines, IJNDB.
IJNDB.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
D.
I'm just trying to read quick. Oh, here's one. Weapons Violence Bullying in School Safety. JICIA.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that was that.
So those are all up for second readings tonight.
Yeah, and this one here, the Acton School Department Law Plan.
What's the?
IHBEAR.
IHB.
E-A-R. No, let's see. That was it, that was those pages there.
Is that six?
Six what?
Policies that you gave us.
I don't know, I didn't count all the numbers there.
Did I miss one? I have IJND.
Yeah. I-N-J-D-R.
I-J-N-D-R.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
IJNDB.
Yeah.
IJNDB1.
E1 or D1?
D, D1.
Oh, D1.
Uh, E1.
Huh?
E, E1.
E1.
All right, E1.
Okay, E1. JICIA, and IHBEAR.
There's also IJND-B-R.
Yeah.
Right, that's the one, right.
Any chance to get another copy of these? I don't have them with me. I don't know what we're doing for those tonight.
Well, I mean, if you got them home, I'll have to write the second reading.
Are we not voting on them tonight?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, 'cause we, well, we went over them at our fir-, at another meeting, we went over them.
Yeah.
As a first reading. And so this time, we're just accepting them as a second reading, and then they become policy.
Gotcha.
Protocol-wise, when do you do that in this meeting? Do you do it under policy?
We do it under unfinished business.
Unfinished business, that's what I was looking for.
Kevin, you can find those on the school website.
Yeah.
Under the draft folder.
And one other thing that, I don't know whether there was a conclusion to it, about the buses, was that ever resolved, whether the drivers could take them home or not, or whether they have to pick them up all the time here?
At this point in time, there hasn't been any change from leaving them here.
Well...
Are you talking about the late bus?
No, no, I'm talking about the people bringing them.
And their documents.
The one in, the lady in Springdale brings hers home, because that's her for a shot.
School policies.
How come the others can't bring their buses with, do it like we did before?
Documents link, I think.
Because we wanted them here.
And school policy was under that.
In case there was an emergency evacuation, we wanted the kids to be able to sit in the bus and in climate weather.
Okay. I mean...
We didn't have to vote on anything.
No, 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 I just want, we never really did resolve it.
No, we never heard the outcome.
We never heard the outcome of what it was, because nobody's gonna drive them or move them anywhere off the property.
I think, I think that's a decision for the bus company, 'cause all we do is lease the buses.
Right.
You know, that's a decision that the company itself would have to make.
But the company was asked, the company was asked in a meeting if the buses could be left here.
Yes.
Because I was at that meeting, where the company was asked if the buses could be left here.
Right.
That's fine, I mean, if that's what they agreed to, that's, you know, it's not up to us to decide.
No, but evidently, the person down there, I don't know the head lady's name, said that that decision has to come from the superintendent here, as to whether they, it seems as though, it just seems to be passed back and forth.
Well, I can clarify, whatever it is right now, can be just left as is. Here's the challenge. If we're trying to evacuate quickly, like truly actually get them to the safety building, it doesn't matter if they're on the premises or not, because the drivers aren't. So the amount of time it takes for the driver to get in the bus and get down here, if the bus is with them, or get in their car, drive down here, and then go get the bus, and then, it was so insignificant. Chances are it'd be faster if the bus was actually with the driver already, than having to change vehicles. If we're talking about staying on the property and getting warm, then we still have to go through some other hoops to get us access to the bus, permission to turn the bus on, and they're still over there with our new evacuation route over here. So it's not, you're trying to anticipate more than one possible emergency situation. And so, you know, with, with five weeks left, and the drivers had their side, you know, again, with why they parked it at home in between runs, it just, it's just not a neat answer. So I think we do have to come up with some sort of final plan, but I think, I think we have to really weigh what are the chances of us needing which emergency more likely?
As a suggestion, why don't we discuss it at an administrative team meeting, put it on the June agenda, and say it's either optional or not optional?
I think that would be the discussion to have.
Right, I'm not saying you have to decide, I just, it was kind of left in midday, and I've talked to a couple of the drivers, and they're laying the responsibility here and down there, it's vice versa, you know?
It needs closing.
And could you put every child on, on the bus there? Do you have enough seats on the bus?
Usually, they don't keep enough buses here.
Right, well, this is what, so, anyway, we can end this discussion now, I'm just saying, something to think about for next year.
But during this process, seems like the bus company's saying it's up to us to decide, we're saying it's up to them to decide.
Right.
The person from the bus company here at the next meeting, if possible?
I'll talk with the director.
So we can come through.
I'll talk with management and find out what they want to do.
We did, we did have the, the...
Manager.
Yep, the district manager, and also the lady that runs the show down here. We did have her here at the last meeting, and they seemed to think that they didn't really care. That was the, that was the question that I got from them, was that they didn't care whether they took them home, or whether they left them here. And at that meeting, it was expressed by the school that we wanted them here.
That's right.
We asked them to have them here at that meeting. So that's why he said, "Okay, then we'll have them here." But he didn't seem to really care where the buses were kept.
We should have something in writing that says they don't care where the bus is kept. It, you know, that they don't care, but if we say...
But we said we have access. If we're talking about, they're sitting here, but we're not allowed to touch them until the bus drivers get here, then there's no sense of them sitting here. That's what I'm saying. That was, that was the second message that I got, was legally, we couldn't have access. So we need to have that clear, otherwise, there is no point of them being here.
Right.
Right, so I mean, that can be another...
Joy.
I think management doesn't care, but it's the drivers who have to come back and pick up their cars who care.
That's right.
Is that...
Since I had to do that at one point in my time when I did that, I know what it's like to do all that, I guess I'm just trying to...
So our need has to be worth the inconvenience.
Right.
You know, we have to make that decision.
So we'll have the discussion, we'll call management, we'll put it on the June agenda.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, then I'll look for approvals of our regular meeting of April 9th, 2018.
I just had one little silly thing. On page two, second paragraph, it says, second sentence in second paragraph, $3,000 per a year for three years. So if we could just get rid of the A.
It's a typo.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just hate typos in an educational type document.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'll accept the minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th with that one correction.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Richard. We accept the meetings, the minutes of the June, of the April meeting. Any further discussion? There are none, are those in favor? Any comments from the public? Okay, then, how about communications and correspondence?
Do you have some that arrived in your packet?
I don't know, things here look like from the state, or something here.
There are a couple of ones here. I think we'll probably get to the State of Maine School Grants about technology when we get to Michael's report, so we'll kind of leave that for then.
What about the A through F thing?
The A through F thing, if we'd like to have any discussion on the A through F thing?
Well, was the superintendent, is that in your report?
Um, I have a press release on it, yes. Send my report.
Okay, so we'll put those things when we get to the staff...
I do have a, I do have a letter that was addressed to me from the Department of Ed. Based on documentation that was submitted, your district is in compliance with meal pattern requirements in effect for the year 12, 12, 12-13. Your reimbursement will begin April 1st, 2013. And contact us if you have any concerns at any time while you continue implementing the new meal pattern guidelines. That's all I got.
And Holly pretty much takes care of that, doesn't she, keeping us in line with our...
Travel permission.
Okay, then let's go on to staff reports, and we'll begin with the superintendent's report, please.
Was it, that's not in the packet, right?
No, it isn't.
Coming around.
to the two news, two major newspapers that we have, the Journal of New York and the Sanford News. And there's a narrative that I wrote. Do you want me to read it, or do you just want to peruse it on your own?
I've, I've read it, so...
I'll find reading on my own.
Okay. So this is what was submitted to the, to the press. And on the second page is what was summarized on the May 2nd edition of the Journal of New York. There wasn't anything from us in the Sanford News.
Any discussion on the report card before we go on?
Well, I'd like to say I wasn't happy seeing a C, since we, I feel, have small class size.
It was only 2.2 points away from being a B.
Thank you for the math.
It was a C, it was definitely a C plus.
Well, the other thing is that, you know, all the things that we've been reading, all the reports and all the things that have come out since the grades have been released, is that the percentage of low-income families, or families that require free or reduced lunch, in a system, highly affect the grade of the school. If you look at the schools that got As, for instance, it was Thelma, it was Cape Elizabeth, where they have like a 10% amount of their kids that get free or reduced lunch. The larger cities, the bigger the cities, the more kids they have free and reduced lunch, the lower the grades were. That's why some of the Portland schools. And in addition to that, they have, because some of your cities, we don't have the problem, but a lot of the bigger cities have an issue with English as a second language, where the kids are still learning English, and still, they're all graded the same on their tests, that, you know...
I think we can strive to get an A. That's what I think. I say this to my kids all the time. I feel we have the teaching staff where we could get an A very easily, whether kids are poor or not, because we have the help here. I just feel with all the programs we have in place, you know, the STAR program, I mean, all that supplemental help, RTI, seems like we have a lot of help for those kids, so I'd just like to see it go up if they grade us again.
And it's also based on a, it's also not really based on, you know, I'm more impressed with our wall of success, the reading wall of success, than I am with, with those test scores, because if you, if you look at the reading wall of success and see how each child has progressed, and how many levels they've come up, it's pretty impressive to see how these kids are improving in their reading skills. And basically, these statewide grades are based on a standardized test that kids take once on one day out of the whole year. I don't think they really show what, not, not that I'm saying that we're, we're perfect and we don't need to improve, I totally hear you, and I think that's what all of us are interested in doing, is, is seeing more growth. But if you look at the, at the reading wall that Lisa puts up out here, that shows the progress from one level to the next, and where each child is on their grade level, it shows really definite improvement and definite growth. Now, whether that growth translates over on that one day that they take a standardized test or not, is, is something else. And that could have something to do, probably, with whether or not the kids had a good breakfast, or whether they, you know what I'm saying, some of the, some of the outside things.
I know, but they're...
But otherwise, why would, why would a community that has only 10% of, of free and reduced lunches, or kids that are in a poverty level, get higher grades, because they're, because they put more money into what they have? They put more money into their schools. They probably have literacy specialists in every school, they probably have a lot of the things that we've had to cut from our budget and drop from our budget over the years, because they can afford it.
I know, but there comes a time where the state or the federal government, they do have to measure somehow, and they have these nationwide tests, and they're gonna measure, no matter what test they end up making, they're gonna measure, and we should be measuring high, no matter what test. I don't care what test.
Your concern is, do we know that? I've got it.
We can't help. Who lives in town?
I mean, how many...
Who attends schools?
How many school districts in the state of Maine receive a C?
Two hundred fifty-two.
What was the percentage?
Fifty percent.
Well, again, because the governor believed in the bell curve, you're always going to have, he, that in itself is a flawed system. What I'm hearing, and I think is, for me, look beyond the C. And I know a lot of people aren't going to do that, but it is my job to do that. And beyond that C, I will look at, as will most of my staff, really delve into those lower 25%, why are they not making the progress we want them to make? It is not about the letter grade, it is about measuring success for those students. The bell curve sets up half the state to be above or below whatever middle the average creates. So even if you had the entire state between 90 and 100%, somebody at a 95 would be a C, because that's what the bell curve creates. So that itself is flawed. However, we are never, ever going to be done saying, "What else can we do?" And although home and economics play into it, there are many schools who find a way to help students be successful despite all the obstacles put in front of them. We must continually look at those schools, look at those practices, and ask ourselves, "What else can we be doing?" That's the bottom line. It's not the letter grade, it's what's behind it. I understand why the governor did what he did, he's got people talking. But the C does not explain, any more than the A explains, why there, it's so much more.
Right, but an A school is gonna say, "We have practices in place, and it's working, and our kids are doing well." When you do get a B, a C, or a D, you have to say, "What are we doing wrong? We have to encourage better practices." I mean, you know, if we got an A, we'd be like, "Wow, we, we are doing really good by our students."
But in truth, do you not know students who get an A without trying?
Yes.
Okay, so an A does not tell the whole story. You can coast and get an A for some students, that does not measure the student's success. If you're handed $100 million, it does not mean you earned wealth, it means it's given. It's far deeper than the letter grade. We must, as a school, look beyond the letter grade and say, "What are we doing successfully?" And the governor is not gonna come down here and do that investigating for us. So we've got to be careful not to stop at the letter grade. I want to look at, and he's used the same data, data that we have used for years. That standardized test is what we report out every year on AYP. Acton has met or exceeded the AYP standard every year with the state. So hasn't Cape Elizabeth. You know what, Cape Elizabeth will get in trouble, though, because they didn't make adequate yearly progress, because they're already at a high level.
How much higher can they get?
Right, it's harder to, so they'll actually get, they get, those types of schools can often find themselves penalized for not closing the gap that much more. So we just have to be careful. We have to look at our data. Standardized tests are one picture, and they are a picture. I'm not saying they don't count.
Right, but I don't understand why people are so up in arms, because, "Oh, A through F, big deal." It's, it's a measurement in time, and we aren't an A, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, Joy?
I think one answer to that could be that we're so small, that one or two students can throw the score.
Oh, I believe that from the beginning.
So it's not, it's really not statistically significant in our case, to be quite honest. In, in all the small schools, that's what I've heard for years, maybe that's... Well, I mean, and one of the, one of the cutouts to the assessment was, if you had less than 10 kids in a particular category, they, you weren't rated.
Right.
Because you could easily identify who those 10 kids were. And I mean, you've got some grades that are getting pretty close to that. You've got 14 incoming kindergarteners.
And it's based on the bottom 25%, is that correct?
That's where, that's would have affected our scores negatively.
That's what affected us, it's based on the bottom 25%.
And the amount of progress. So the kids who struggle, you know...
Are the ones who...
Who are the ones who are going to need more support to get them out of a struggling category.
Yeah, but there's nothing wrong with looking at that. Those are the kids we need to help.
I said, I said that. I said that, you know? But like I said, though, when you measure on a bell curve, you are always setting up half the group to be below. That is by design.
Right.
And, and I, I thought that what we were doing here with the STAR program and the RIT was aimed at doing just that, fixing those...
We are looking at the students individually and saying, "What do they need?" Absolutely.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? Kevin?
No, but the only thing I would have to add to this is, I actually agree with everything everybody's saying. I think when you really look at how the state's doing it, it's absurd, but that doesn't change the fact that the metrics behind it are good. I mean, I care about reading, I care about writing, I care about growth, I care about what our lowest 25% performing are doing. Those all are reasonable. We're a small school, we have the ability to be nimble. So granted, one or two performances from one or two students can cause extreme fluctuations from year to year, you're talking about fewer students, which gives us a greater ability to work with those students, whereas, when you've got 30 kids in a class and half of them speak four different languages, in some of the more urban centers, I'll take our challenges any day over that. But what I would suggest as to, regardless of the absurdity of the bell curve and all that other stuff, rather than look at data once a year with what the state gives us, I think it's a good practice if we more routinely and periodically look at our own data and our own metrics. Because in all honesty, the, the state assessments are not that huge of a hurdle. And with, you know, rather than just wait to see what the governor gives us, maybe every quarter, we can look at data and sort of talk, have our own internal plans, I think the strategic plan moves more towards that. Get them out of the conversation, because if we're handling data in our own way, and we're meeting our own benchmarks, we'll exceed those easy.
And I mean, that's gonna happen to some degree logically when we move into the Common Core and we're doing smarter balance assessment, is that it's going to be a much more frequent look at student progress, student achievement, student deficits.
Yeah.
By design.
That would be my only, you know, contribution is, I'd like to sort of see this group more periodically, more periodically look at our own data, sort of, because the whole point of it is, as you get data, react to it, determine, take, use it to make good decisions moving forward. And if, the only time we're, and again, being new to this, I don't know if this is true, but if the only time we look at data and react to it is what the governor gives us, that's not enough.
No, we do get, time to time, our, any...
But I mean, more from night to time, routinely, so like the...
A systematic approach.
A systematic, one of the, I think an important part of a board, you know, one of the things you can do as a board is, on a somewhat routine scheduled basis, look at particular metrics and make that sort of, just like we do budget, just like we do negotiations, just like we do policies, part of that is data. That is one of the most powerful ways. If we want to get the A, we gotta look at the data.
We're just gonna call him Mr. Data.
Oh, I love Data. The other, but the last little pieces, though, one thing I find really interesting, when you look at student, when you look at the scores, generally, if you're at or slightly above the state average, that's good. When is, just person, as me speaking, that's still not good enough? C plus isn't, you know, when we really think of it, is a C plus really going to give our students the edge they need in career in college? Probably not. So, but it is generally well accepted, if you're at or above the state average, things are good. But they can, I agree, they can be better, but we...
Yeah, and we strive, we want better.
We can, this is, this is a great place.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there's always that, so I agree with Trish, we there's, we just keep doing it. But I would love to see more periodic looking at data.
Good.
Our data.
Okay, back to the superintendent's report.
Thanks for sharing that.
I have an update on RTI, this is for you to read in your leisure, and also, the never-ending changes in restraint and seclusion have changed again. And here are the 2013 changes in restraining students and secluding.
Why is there such a problem with this? They don't know how to restrain children, or...
It was very restricted before.
I think the issue becomes, when is a restraint by an adult an assault? And that's what it basically comes down to.
Yeah, but a lot of it is common sense. You can't always write everything that's gonna happen in a classroom, or a hallway, or a lunchroom.
I understand that. All I'm telling you is that it is very controversial.
Common sense has been thrown out of society, I'm telling you.
That's all I have.
Litigation.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the principals' report.
Okay, well, the first two topics are about the vision and the cohort. I am in touch with, communicating with, attending meetings regarding all of this efficiency-based learning, changing instruction, training our staff. I keep going to meetings, I keep learning new stuff, I keep networking. I will be looking very carefully very soon at cost of the next year or two of training the staff, of what needs to be done, and setting priority, which again, will go along with our vision and strategic planning. It's, it's overwhelmingly exciting and yet daunting task to, to really move us forward. The staff has gone to do observations in the SAD 57 district, to see teachers implementing a different style of instruction. They came back overwhelmingly excited, emails came out, you know, couldn't believe what they saw, can't wait to learn how to do this better. So I'm sending 14 of our staff over the next two weeks to two days of training, so that they will work on their lesson plans over the summer, they'll be restructuring their classroom organization. We'll be asking for things like, instead of desks, tables, you know, where can I put this, how does, actually physically moving the structure of the room to allow for a change in instruction. And it's really exciting. It's really pulling out the curriculum director side of my position, more so than ever before. It is, it's really exciting, and it's, it's a lot of new learning for me and for the staff. But I've never seen the staff so excited and so motivated as an entire group to learn something new. They are truly on board, they're reading their books, they're having the classroom discussions, and they want to know, "How can we do this? What comes next? Tell us what's going on." And it is exciting, it really is, and we know... And we know, again, we know we have a very veteran staff. So to have, you know, twenty-something people all on board in the same direction, really eager to learn how to do instruction better so that students do own their learning at a younger age and a more proficient way, I'm loving it. And other notes, the spring concerts, last week was the K to two. Tomorrow night is the fourth... So K to three concert was last week. The four to eight will be tomorrow night, Wednesday night. You know, Jeannie, again, has been working the kids to really learn a lot of new songs and they are having a blast, not only singing but performing. So the crowd was quite into the songs last week. You know, parents were just loving it and the gym was pretty packed. It was really great. Along with that, the OM has been and will be again tomorrow night having silent auction and ice cream sundaes for sale to raise money. Because as you know, we have two teams going off to the Worlds in Michigan. And it's kind of funny that they actually have to have a longer trip because they have to stay in the United States. It would actually be a shorter drive if they could get into Canada and back down. But the whole passport issue makes for a longer trip, but the kids are excited. We have been back practicing fire drills, which are now the meeting places here at the larger circle. I could tell you that we had the entire school evacuated in two minutes. All staff and students fully accounted for in four. So as far as efficiency and safety, I don't think you're going to see much better. Coming up soon, now that the NWAs will be wrapping up, we will be practicing full evacuations off the property. But again, as we had all these discussions with the crisis committee, the rate in which volunteer response people can be here is so varied. You know, anywhere from five to fifteen, twenty minutes, depending on when and where people are, right? It's really important that we recognize that it'll be the staff... The staff that ensures the safety of the students first and foremost. So that kind of speed and accuracy with, you know, exiting the building and accounting for every single member, whether they're volunteer or part-time, is really important. And then to get them safely off the property should we need to. I'm looking at having backpacks of sorts for each staff member. Each classroom teacher to have maybe some thermal blankets and some emergency supplies that every staff member could grab right out of their own, just like they grab the fire drill list. Then warmth would not be an issue, you know, should they need, you know, some of those space blankets. They're very small. They fold up. Some ponchos, raincoats. So in an emergency where we are concerned a little bit more about weather exposure, we will have some gear in place in a very affordable way. So that's something I hope to have in place for the fall.
That's a good idea.
What happened to all that equipment, all those baskets that they made up that they carried up when they went on the fire drill?
We still have those with the safety cones and the vest, all of that flags, all of that set to go. Yeah, yeah. This is for the individual students. So again, the NWA testing is going, that is a computerized test. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and the staff was very appreciated and appreciative of the extra effort and attention that they received from multiple places, from the administration, from the PTG. It was really a... It was really upbeat, fun week. It really was. It was a great atmosphere. I also want to pass out to you something that we've talked about before. If you want to take one, pass them back. Tracy Scully emailed Betsy and I today and asked us to update you on the latest. As you know, the Skinny, the book that the girls are reading that led us to the sticky notes, well, now the next eighth grade group of girls is reading the book. So that's influencing them.
Wait, I think you gave me too much, yeah. Something else. I think that's her maybe.
Thank you. Thank you. So meanwhile, the original three that have now been interviewed on TV and interviewed for the Journal Tribune, isn't that great? Have been... Have caught the attention of Robin, I do believe her name is pronounced Donna Rummo, founder and president of Santa's Cause. And this states here that she usually chooses this award to a graduating senior and gives them a donation of money. So instead, she has chosen our three girls as recipients of this award. And they're each getting a hundred dollars. Well, the girls actually came to me yesterday and told me about this. And they said, we don't feel comfortable keeping the money. I said, okay. So we have an idea. I said, okay. So they have proposed to me that they would like to investigate the possibility of doing some sort of 5K race. We started discussing the pros and cons, the possibilities, the planning. We're looking at probably in the fall if we could manage to orchestrate it and what kind of help they could get to make it. So they want to do it as a fundraiser for further anti-bullying campaign. So again, I just think it's just so wonderful that this is continually promoting a positive vibe for these girls and their classmates. The new eighth grade class that's reading the book has created a bulletin board with Tracy Scully's class and says, take what you need. And here, it's talking about words that anyone might need, courage or strength or happiness, you know? And I did see some kids already today taking a word from the bulletin board. So something to pick me up that they might need for the day. And you know, it's just... Just a wonderful, again, perspective on teenage girls that a lot of times we just don't get to see. We don't get to enjoy the positive. So these girls are promoted for themselves but also for the school. And now with this next level, you know, should they manage to make the 5K run work, you know, then we're talking up way beyond the school walls. That's great. So really exciting. And then the sad news, although I didn't let them go away far, Jim Crawford has finished up his long-term stint as PE instructor. He's still our baseball coach. And we've got him lined up for a few other subpositions that we need covered over the rest of the school year. He had all the attention at the assembly last week. And really was just a wonderful tribute by the young kids. And a thank you to him really, really touched him. He was absolutely overwhelmed and has nothing but, you know, fabulous things to say about our kids. So that was wonderful.
I mean, is he leaving, leaving? Do you think he's coming back next year or is he just leaving?
Well, he was a long-term sub. So I expect he's going to look for a full-time job at some point.
Oh, okay.
Between now and the end of the school year, we are trying to continue to use him when we have a teacher out. Just a really great demeanor about him. Worked hard to very quickly learn all the kids' names. I would go in and observe his lessons, just so positive, so encouraging. So anytime we can get a substitute with that quality, you know, we want to keep them.
He's done a great job, too, with the kids coaching this year as well. He's had a group of kids with a wide range of skills. Kids that have never played before to kids that have played for, you know, a while. And as the parent of one of his players, I can tell you that he's done a fantastic job.
Talking about the baseball coaching.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, he's a class act. Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to Special Education Director's report.
Okay. Well, I will once again talk about eighth grade transition to Santa High School. We have six special ed students who are moving up. And we're... Our meetings are taking place next Monday. So that's the official date. With that, and I think that's about it for transition. Staff development on our early release day. Trish was off doing her work with the cohort and I was trying to fill her... Not that you have big feet, very large shoes. And oversaw the staff development. So it all started with the teachers meeting and sharing the observations of the visitations. And they were overwhelmingly positive and very encouraged and really excited about this, the proficiency-based learning and all of what they are learning through this year. So it's kind of a... It's very exciting. It's a little... You know, they're a little anxious, but it's a positive kind of anxiety, if you will, kind of driving them to be more inquisitive and successful. And I worked with the ed techs, the educational technicians. And we did... We had a little discussion about differentiating instruction and co-teaching and kind of helping them work with students who have behavioral issues, you know, how to... And we all shared information. So people were very supportive of one another, talking about that student who pushes your buttons and, you know, how to stay, how to remain calm and not get into a tug-of-war with them. And so then Gail Bovier did a little presentation on the Google Docs. And they put some positive... All of them shared their positive statements and their interactions with students on the Google Docs so that they had some words to use, you know? A script? Yeah, a script. So that instead of saying, ah, you know, don't do that or how can I help you? What would work better for you? And, you know, just trying to empower the student a little bit more. So that was a good day. We missed you, Trish, but it was a good day, good early release day. And then on April twenty-seventh, we had the parents here for an open house for the kindergarten meeting, screening to let them know what was upcoming. And that went... We had about seven or eight parents here and six staff members explaining the process of the screening. And on May seventh, we had a team of six people screening the kindergarteners. And we had different stations that they went to. And fine motor, speech and language, and their cognitive skills were screened. And it was very, very efficient and very, very successful. So all of the students who enter public school must participate in a screening of this sort. So that... We felt that was a very successful day. And then extended school year, just a reminder that extended school year will be from July eighth to August first. And we actually anticipate about ten or eleven students this year. We're still waiting to hear the final number. So, and only serving breakfast.
Anybody have any questions? There, Joy?
Small kindergarten so far, huh?
So far, fourteen students. In class.
We are planning a kindergarten step-up day as well. The date's not ringing in the bell today right now. Late May, early June, so that kids can come back in in the morning, do an activity with the class, practice riding the bus.
I think that's a good idea.
We're going to meet with the parents. And so I will get that date and make sure all of you know, should anybody be available to, again, talk with the parents. Want to really encourage them to feel comfortable being here. So that's coming up.
Will that be on the website?
It could be. Now that you've mentioned it, I bet I could find a way to put it on the website.
And the parents were especially excited about the bus ride because there's a lot of anxiety around kids getting on the bus.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Joy. And we'll go on to the Finance Director's report.
Okay. As you can see, I put some projection numbers in your report. Since then, I have received a few more bills. So I would like to increase the anticipated expenses another $10,000 on the system administration, bringing out to probably at least $20,000. And I think we need to transfer to cover for that department.
Which spreadsheet are we looking at?
System administration.
And what did you... What was that again?
$10,000, you said?
I think that, yes. Right now, it says we're $1,146 in a year.
For system, okay.
Okay, so...
We received another bill today. I'm thinking at least another $10,000 will need to be transferred.
This is between increasing the superintendent two and a half days and legal services.
We will have to make a decision and make it... Make a transfer tonight so if I can get these in before the auditor comes the end of the month. System administration and school administration are the two standalone cost centers that will need transfers in this evening.
Where is... We had the rural grant for the Vision. We were using that. So is that not listed here anywhere? Any costs from the Vision lady, the woman?
No, that's not in these reports. That is a grant.
So that's separate? No, I just want to make sure that wasn't a bill that we got for the Vision in here.
No, no, it's not.
No, this is strictly in terms of the system administration, its need and legal services.
So where do you suggest we take this money from?
Do you have a suggestion, Carla?
Well...
Secondary tuition.
That's the biggest...
Right, but I don't have Joyce's figures on what she needs for the rest of her tuition figures right now. That is at $116,000 per a guesstimate. Secondary tuition right now, I believe, is going to be the best place to take that from. We did have some decrease in enrollment. It looks as if we are going to have a significant balance in that account.
And what is the total amount that you want to transfer? You wanted so much transferred to system?
Right now, my estimate was at $10,000. This week, received another bill. I'm saying probably at least another $10,000 will have to be...
So twenty grand for system admin and the $6,500 or $6,600 for school admin?
Exactly.
But according to this, when you look at secondary tuition, it looks like we're anticipating $250,000?
Yes, we... The fourth quarter bill. And after that fourth quarter bill, we should still have that $171 in the balance.
I say there? I make a motion that we transfer from secondary tuition.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand to school administration?
System administration.
System admin.
Would you like to transfer 25, just to be safe on that one?
Yeah, we should do that. We'll up it to 25 so you don't have to come back to us.
But then we're going to need to do another one for another sixty... You know, the... For the school admin, same amount? Because that's not going to change. That is what it is, correct?
As far as I know. Like I said, I took anticipated costs that I knew of as far as salaries and benefits.
And do you want to say 25 to school admin and 10 to... I mean, 25 to system admin and seven to school admin?
Will that work?
Sounds good. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we transfer $25,000 from secondary tuition line to the system administration line. And that we transfer $7,000 from secondary tuition to school administration. Any further discussion on that?
What did you say that the school administration expenditure was for?
Insurance.
Insurance or insurance costs.
Thank you.
Okay, need more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
The pre-audit is scheduled for May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. The auditor will be here with a couple of his team to go through all of our warrants and checking the accounts and do as much of the audit report as we possibly can. We'll come back again in July after we close the books and probably only a different one day. So we'll get as much dollars we can at that point. As I stated, the rural school grant, we're going to receive $11,279 next year. This year, we got over $19,000. The year before, it was $15,000. So we basically averaged out to about $15,000 for the last three years. The good thing about that money is that it can be used the same as Title II A for staff development. And we can carry that over for two and almost two, four years. So we are just finishing up... We have touched issue with money. We are just finishing up the other money. So we'll have some money available, two papers over here.
That's good because we're going to be really needing that.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a great place to get that extra from. Awesome.
And they've also included a revised EDG 279 for the current year that we're in that states that the state, even though it is now May, they're still calling it a preliminary figure. And they have cut our budget by $67,773.
Which the former figure was...
They started at $40,000.
That's a curtailment. Yeah, curtailment.
But then they've been turning in main scenes, main care scene money. But they're reducing that. We also have two webinars coming up if anybody is interested in attending. One of them is this Friday on the Family... One of them is this Friday on the family medical review back.
Is on what?
Family medical leave. And anytime absences can affect your, your business and cause you legal problems. And the second one is June 5th, and that one is about different absences as well. When somebody should be paid, like an hourly employee, when they should be paid for volunteering, when they shouldn't, things like that that could get us into trouble down the road, so. Very informative, maybe you can put on by drumming with some, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Any questions for Carleen? Thank you, Carleen. Let's move on to the facilities director's report.
All right. I have been doing a lot of work on the grounds in this past month, a lot of work on the fields, coordinating with the coaches and the athletic director for the home games. The playground resurfacing material, as mentioned in my report, that's complete. I added approximately two inches of the safety chips to the playground. The storage garage, which was long awaited, is now complete. Pat Stevens and his crew did a phenomenal job on the project. It was left very neat and clean. He actually did a couple of things that I didn't anticipate him doing. He put drip stone around the perimeter of the building and also put foam and seeded and mulched around the perimeter of the building. It really looked awesome when he was done. And the project also came in below what he had quoted us. So it was, it was, I was very pleased with the, with the project. Next month, it's not on my report, but next month, what I would like to do is, in advance, I'm going to write up an agenda for the long-term planning committee of some things that I want to discuss next month. And at that time, I want to take you out and show you the actual project, what it entailed. And I took some pictures as it was in, in progress, and it was, it's pretty, pretty neat to see how the building was actually lifted, moved, and then set back down on the foundation. It was actually done with airbags, and I thought it was going to be done with jacks. Kind of the way I envisioned it wasn't how it was done, but it was, it was pretty interesting to watch. And like I said, I'm real pleased that it's done. I've already got a lot of stuff back in there. So I'm glad that that project is done. And over the summer, want to, you know, redo the roof and do the rest of the repairs that we had discussed. And, you know, the building is going to serve the, the school well for a number of years. I relined the parking lot this month. The baseball field, I had put on my report that it had been mowed twice, but since the rain and the irrigation has been activated, now I have now mowed it four times. A couple of other things not listed from my report, our annual underground oil tank inspection was completed this month. The other thing that I've been working on and will come up under long-term planning for next month is I am beginning a feasibility study for a biomass boiler installation. I was approached by a gentleman from P and E Plumbing Supply down in Sanford. We met to discuss the possibility of it. He gave me a number of school systems that have done this. It's in the very preliminary stages, but we're meeting again on Friday. But I want to get some of this information to the long-term planning committee to look at, and it's just something that I'm conveying to you tonight because it's something that we may be discussing further if it does in fact materialize into something that we may want to consider.
Can you look at these other schools? Are there any nearby that you know?
I think he said something about a trip to Hawaii to see one.
I know! There you go.
You can do that in the middle of the winter.
There is one that's, that's up in the Bethel area that he suggested, and there's a number of school systems that have done it. The, the product itself is manufactured in Maine, the biomass itself is manufactured in Maine. It's geared towards efficiency, it's geared towards cleaner energy, it's geared towards jobs in Maine. There's, there's just, there's a lot to it, and the engineering aspect of it is way beyond me, and that's why, you know, we have already met on several occasions, and we're going to be meeting a lot to see what it's going to entail and to see if it's possible.
Just as a suggestion, you may want to give Ty a call because back in the old days, we had some very heated discussions in Sanford about biomass, and I think at least he has resources in terms of where you can take a field trip.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing that came to mind as I just discussed some of this information with him is there is a fair amount of science involved to this, and I also would like to explore the possibilities of, if this project should move forward, the possibilities of involving students or to give the students some type of education out of the process if it's, you know, if it moves forward. Like I said, it's, it's in the very early stages, so that's on the list of long-term planning. So as I mentioned, long-term planning with a budget season, we haven't met. My intentions are to get back to business next month.
You'll have to run the agenda.
And not only discuss the things that I have mentioned, but I'm also thinking in terms of potential summer projects. And that's about it.
What was the final cost of the garage then?
$7,000. But keep in mind, there are still some items.
Oh, I know. I just, you said it did, the money was right.
It did come in under, but keep in mind, I still, you know, want to reshingle the roof, there's some boards and whatnot that need to be replaced. The other thing on here too that I had mentioned was the irrigation system. The irrigation system, the startup this year, did require some repairs, and I also have some pending repairs to the system that, you know, with it by operating budget, I'm not too nervous about covering, but I just want you to be aware that it's, there's a zone that's been broken since like 2003. And it's just one of those things that, you know, we've now invested a lot of money in the system when we installed it, and it needs to be fixed. And there's a rain sensor that is also broken, so when the gentleman came and opened the system, we did the necessary repairs to get the system up and running, and I have moved forward with scheduling the other two repairs. So I'm hoping within the next month. He tries to do different fields, he does the Shapley Rec fields, so when he's in the area, he'll, he's going to pop back in with those two other items that we need to repair, and then our system will be at 100%. And then the other thing, and maybe Trish can elaborate on this too, since we have talked about several student-initiated projects, which are all very positive, the ASK group approached Holly in regards to re-ASK.
ASK.
ASK.
Your K was kind of soft on that.
The silent K.
I didn't want to ask.
Sorry.
I'll find that for when it goes out of there.
The ASK group.
ASK group.
ASK group.
Right, okay.
My deepest apologies. Approached Holly and myself about getting the salad bar up out of the basement. They are looking at getting the salad bar back up and running. And I don't know if you have any more info on that, Trish?
Yep, they, they're looking at, Holly had the discussion with Elise, who is the advisor to the group, how students would need to be involved in the success of the salad bar. One would be marketing to students, you know, deciding how, how it would be served, who would be interested, what age group is appropriate. The salad bar and self-service etiquette, portion control, creation of point of sale information, educating students to use salad dressing sparingly, the collection of data, percent of students opting for salad bar, and measuring salad bar waste. So they were going to ask the seventh and eighth graders along with staff to stick post-it notes on the salad bar stating which fruits and or vegetables they would like to see offered. So the project was done so that they could figure out, you say salad bar, what food do the students really want to eat, and is it really within the guidelines?
The nutrition guidelines.
Many times what's on a restaurant salad bar is a whole lot more than salad, you know, so you can't be putting, you know, cookies and pudding and.
Aww.
Chicken wings.
Right, right, fried chicken and what have you. So, you know, Holly was really open to discussing it with them, but also cautious about its, you know, marketing success, you know, students say they want it, but what are they really going to take off of it? I mean, this is always a struggle. It is in people's homes, you know, you know, you took all the mashed potatoes, but you didn't take any green beans. Certainly at the, at the school lunch for the regular servings, we're concerned about what gets thrown away, the waste of food, trying to give them healthy choices, but then you still can't forcibly feed the children. So that balancing act, so Holly was really open to this discussion. I just see, you're going to say, overall, the responsibility level that we are seeing coming out of the seventh and eighth grade this year is truly remarkable. So they really, this is a large group of kids who have taken this on.
I like to see the student-initiated projects like this.
They're passionate about it, so very impressive. And I appreciated Holly giving them the right respect and the open-mindedness of pursuing this.
And the salad bar had been downstairs for a number of years, and the kids after school, they cleaned it all up, they washed it, and, you know, so it's good to see them not only initiate this stuff, but actually they own it, you know, the process and stuff. It's, it's good, it's good stuff.
Good. Okay, anything else?
My kids love the salad bar. They're disappointed to see it leave. They actually ate salad, they love salad.
So we've got you on the agenda for long-term planning for June.
Thank you very much.
And I think we better move on to Michael before he thinks of something else. Michael, technology, please.
All right, well, as you mentioned, NWA's have been going pretty smoothly. We are on language testing this week and next week. NWA's is piloting science tests, so there's some classes that are interested in trying that out.
What grade levels?
Fifth grade, sixth grade mainly. I don't, I don't know if any of the primary grades opt in for it or not, but it's, it's available if they're interested. I'm in the process of developing and researching server deployments and maintenances that will be needed to be done for the summertime for new computer deployment, bringing to the MLTI craziness that's been happening. Oh yeah, LaPage opted in for the HP proposal based on the fact that businesses are primarily use Windows-based computers and also help with progression into college as well. But with that comes the problem of change. And so I sat down with the teachers and we discussed this possible change and taking on the HP devices as our one-to-one initiative for seventh, eighth grade, and the teachers are not on board with it. They're just, they'll have to convert all of their current documents in lesson plans.
This is what I read. If, you know, the high schools, they are demanding the HP, but not middle school, so why can't we just keep apples?
That's just it.
We can.
We can. That's, that's the beautiful thing about this, this round of MLTI deployment is they're offering us the ability to have a choice.
Keep it, yeah.
We have the choice, the choice between the top five bids.
Yeah, but I'm not worried about having HP at this level. They can do that at the high school if they feel.
And they have them at home.
And I don't even think they're doing it at the high school. Sanford High School is using iPads.
Right, so.
And I think they're going to be sticking with iPads.
I mean, you know, we're the donut hole, okay? Let's remember who we are, okay? So if we want apples, we do apples. Want oranges, we go somewhere else.
Well, I want Kumpquats. What about Kumpquats?
When I was in Oakland, when I was in Oakland last week for the cohort meeting, they actually had some Apple representatives there, and they discussed the options. And they're really working with the schools because the cost of change.
Right.
You know, he, there may be a one-time hit, according to the governor, of making, of buying, but the investment the schools already have, and to think that a student cannot transfer knowledge from an Apple, a Mac or iPad to an iPhone, to a PC, he's missing the boat.
Yeah, right.
You know, the kids can definitely make changes should they need to in their future career, make the change to a different piece of technology.
Yeah, but I mean, at the high school level, yes, have some HP devices around and let them work on those, but at this level, we just keep what we got.
But just, my understanding, is my understanding correct in that just Apple's so much cleaner, less headaches to deal with.
There was a lot of concern about that mentioned.
On my side, the maintenance, I've managed Windows networks, and just maintaining a Windows network is night air.
I'm just saying, from reading your report, I was like, oh my God, poor Mike, let me
tell him, don't worry.
Well, the other thing is too that, you know, we've made a practice of passing the, the Apples down, the Macs down to the lower grades, and so if we were going to continue to do that, then we couldn't pass them down, we couldn't run both systems.
We could run both systems. Yeah, there is, if we can run both systems, it's, it'd just take a little tweaking in designing and maybe server upgrades, but the bottom line is, the governor has given us the option to choose. The HP option is at $250 per seat per year, that the, you know, the government will be covering that bill. So they gave us the option to make the difference. So.
What's the difference?
My, there's a spreadsheet on, on one of those pages that shows you the, the numbers.
Looks like the HP is more expensive than the Apple.
Well, the first Apple quote is for iPads on one-to-one.
Oh, then we've got this.
And the teachers get a laptop. And then there's a laptop.
273.
Right, which is the one I recommend.
So we're talking about $19 per seat more that we'd have to cover?
I think it's 33, $33, which I've already, it's already budgeted and passed, so we already have the money to cover this.
We're not going to do it.
It's, it's, what I find interesting is the, I don't know if it's on that spreadsheet or not, there's, there's one spreadsheet that shows the value that is, that is, that you get from these devices.
Does it collect the software that's built into it?
No, the value, like the MacBook costs a thousand bucks, and we're, we're paying a thousand bucks for it, whereas the HP costs like 600 bucks, and we're still paying a thousand bucks for it. That, that's what I'm trying to, and the HP solution also doesn't have any software, really. It just has the Windows-built software.
And actually loaded.
They're supplying antivirus software, and the Macs have a lot of third-party software that they're currently using and will continue to use. But I think the Macs have like a $2,000 value almost, as compared to the HP solution only has like a $100, $200 value. But I don't think you have those numbers.
When I saw his concerns, I was like.
For me, it's not even.
Do we want to, do we want to just make a motion to?
Support the Apple?
To support the Macs, to continue to support the Macs in our.
I make that motion. I make the motion that we continue on the road that we have set.
I'll second it.
Continue.
What'd you want to say?
Well, there's, there's two Mac, there's two Apple solutions on the table.
Yeah.
And I'm recommending we go with the Apple MacBook Airs.
Apple, wait a minute, Apple?
MacBook Airs.
How do you spell Airs?
Just A-I-R, Air.
Case silent.
I heard the K. Why?
The teachers are also on board with, the seventh and eighth grade teachers are also on board. They don't feel we're ready to use a tablet solution, and we also lose a lot of capabilities when using a tablet solution.
Okay, so that, that's your recommendation. So would you like to change your motion to go with my?
I motion that we accept Mike's, my recommendation.
Second.
No, you already got a second.
Richard second. You got to re-second.
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those, any further discussion? It's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Do you need a motion to accept the administrative?
I don't know. Did you get, I was waiting to see if Michael had anything else.
No, I'll leave it like that. The option for this is at June thirteenth. So I'll have more paperwork and stuff to keep in the sign, I think, by then.
I'll make a motion to accept all administrative reports.
Second.
Who's in second? Is all those in favor? All right, I gotta go back and find my agenda now. I've buried it here.
Committee, standing, and special committee reports.
Policy committee have anything at all?
We've got a meeting coming up.
Thursday at three o'clock.
Thursday at three o'clock. And I've got the packet that you.
Okay, negotiations committee?
I just wanted to state that we just met with the staff yesterday and we'll be meeting again next week. The support staff. And then the teachers will be meeting this Friday. So negotiations are ongoing.
All right, let's move on then to unfinished business. And the first item I might have got is the adoption of the school calendar.
Is that in here?
Yes, it's on the back of something.
Oh, I missed it.
On the back of one of Michael's pieces.
As I say every year since the goof, I want to make sure we have 175 student days and 180 teacher days. And if someone added that up correctly, then I will vote for this calendar.
You didn't add it?
One year, we were off a day and we'll never hear the end of it from the state. We can't go wrong again, or else. I don't know what the or else was.
We got a waiver anyway. It was, it was a year of lots of change going on. And this is like, this is in line with, pretty much in line with Sanford's calendar, correct?
Right. There's just a few change, a few differences. We have, I think, three fewer early release days. Right? Sanford usually has about seven, we like about four. So we have our students a little bit more. Their teacher contract is slightly different than ours, so the teacher workshop days are not identical for total number. What is different about their calendar this year and ours is if you look at the bottom of the calendar, it says one teacher flex day. This was an innovative solution in the Sanford level that works for us as well. It means there is a teacher workshop day not accounted for at this point. So like I've been talking about with the training that's coming up, if I get an opportunity that right now I can't see and I could offer a two-afternoon in the week of January training that I require the staff to stay much later than usual, they would have that opportunity to, to get that training done. The other thing it would do, it would also allow me to use something like a February vacation day. Maybe one of the teams need to, want to work on curriculum and they want to use one of their vacation days. So again, that would allow for that flexibility without costing us additional money.
That's very good.
So I love the idea. The only thing you have to be careful of is that you need to give plenty of parent notice when that's gonna occur. Parent notice?
No, no, this is for teachers.
I know, but you will have certain kids who won't be in school that day, right? But it's not for the kids. It's the teacher workshop day. I understand that, but you don't have students in school on a teacher workshop day. Right. So if I were to do it during February vacation. That's fine. That's what I'm talking about. It would not change the student days. It would allow me flexibility. Even something as remote as if teachers want to take a upgraded CPR course on a Saturday, you know. So it allows that flexibility of, I know I've got training coming up, but I can't tell you today when it's going to be offered. I would not take away a student day. It's to be beyond either after school, on a vacation, or even like this year, we have a teacher workshop day after school gets out.
Right.
So it allowed me to choose, and that's what they're doing in Sanford, that one flex day is allowed at the building principal level to meet the needs of that particular school.
How much notice do you need to give to teachers?
There is nothing in the contract that says that particular, so I, you know, I'm gonna use it most effectively. The teachers had a chance to look at this calendar and give feedback, so they know it's in there. They like the idea of it. And I, you know, I always work with the greatest chance of success, so I would offer it to them. So I, I think it's a great thing to work, and it's worth trying.
That was good.
Okay. So other than that, most of the calendar matches up for bus routes and student days nearly identical to Sanford, since that's where we send most of our kids.
I'll make a motion to accept this calendar.
I second it. I added the numbers for you, man. You're good.
Is it good?
You're good.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the school calendar from thirteen fourteen as presented. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, so moved. Okay. Annual approval of the Acton School Emergency Plan.
That's not in here.
That wasn't in the packet.
Yeah, but that's something we passed out last month.
It was in the last.
You're supposed to bring the stuff back.
I did bring it back. I did.
I did.
Please. I even read it.
Yeah, I know, I read it. Yeah.
Can I have a motion to accept the school emergency plan as presented?
Hold on, I gotta get it in front of me.
I'll make the motion that we accept the school emergency plan, Acton School Department Emergency Plan Guide as written.
I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we accept the Acton School Department's Emergency Plan and Guide.
Was that passed out in the packet last time or did it go, did it give out during the meeting?
Andy passed it out, I think, at the end or in between his report somewhere. Were you here last?
I was not here last time.
Oh, you weren't here last time. Maybe Andy has an extra.
Do you have another copy of that? If you can get one. Kevin?
Hmm, I can't.
Is it online? Can you email it to me?
Okay. Well, it's about, it's pretty thick.
Thirty pages.
I'll just abstain. We can still pass it without.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Four in one extension.
Not because I'm sure, I'm sure it's.
Okay.
We'll get you one. Thanks.
And while we are on unfinished business, let's look at our second, second reading of. IJND, IJNDR, IJNDE, JICIA.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you do it one more time?
Yeah, go fa-, slower, faster.
IJND.
IJND. E one?
E one, E one or EI, which is.
He said it was E one.
Okay, E one. JICIA, that's wrong.
What about, what happened to student computer internet use? Was that IJNDB? What was that?
Oh my god.
More rhyming and look alike characters.
And is there, what is the, like, rhyme and reason?
These are all from, these are state-generated.
IJNDB.
There really is, there's a codification at the Department of Ed for policies.
I'm sure there is, but it's absolutely archaic.
I know.
Okay, and two more. IHBEAR.
I what? I H?
Yeah, these are two.
I am a bear.
These are two that he got, Michael added on tonight. And IJNDBR.
What was that last one? I?
So those two are for first reading. The other, we want to accept.
Well, I did.
Correct?
He didn't give us those others before. We didn't have those.
No, 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 that's why I'm.
I gave you the IJNDs.
Yes.
Yes, we got IJND.
Those are all second readings.
I don't know about the bear one.
Bear one is not mine.
Okay, so that's a new one. That's a first reading one.
Mike, I'm only seeing one IJNDB on the internet.
There's an IJND, yeah, the dash E one.
First reading. Is it in the draft? Correct?
Not seeing it.
Well, I don't even have that.
Not seeing dash E one.
I just got IJ on BB.
JNDB.
Maybe I found it back here.
Yeah, there's a dash E one in there somewhere.
Maybe we stuck an extra letter in that one. I'm thinking. I think it's IJNDB.
Michael?
Yes?
Could you present for a second reading, please, the list of policies that we are looking at for a second reading? Just give us those numbers.
The second reading is IJND, Acton School Department website. IJND dash R.
That's a regulation on it.
Website guidelines.
Yeah.
IJNDB, Student Computer and Internet Use Policy. IJNDB dash E one, guidelines for students on email confidentiality and record retention. And then IJNDB dash R, Student Computer and Internet Use Rules.
Right.
Those are second readings from my understanding. Oh.
And these are all in section I.
What happened to the CIA?
Yeah, JICIA, weapons, violence, bullying, and school safety. That's also.
Yeah, 'cause I have it here, right here.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept those policies?
So moved.
For a second reading. It's been moved by Richard that we accept all the JNs, all the Js, all the IJs.
I'm not gonna try to repeat all of them again.
For, for a second reading. It's been moved by Richard. Second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So moved.
So they are now adopted. And then.
But what is this? IHBEAR?
That is, that would be for a first reading.
No, we did the first reading in March twelve.
IHBEAR.
Hold on.
First reading, March twelve, one seven, four.
Yeah, 'cause I have it right here.
Hold on.
Okay, then what's the first second? Let's look for adopting that also as a second, for a second reading.
What's the title on it?
IHBEA, it's LAU, it's.
I'm not seeing these online either.
LAU Plan?
LAU Plan. We did that one.
Yeah, we did that one like two months ago.
Yeah, but that was the first reading.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept that one as well? IHBEAR for a second reading?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Kevin?
Second reading. Mary?
I'll second that.
And Mary?
I H B E A R. All those in favor?
Okay.
Opposed.
I don't know. I remember.
Amen.
Okay. Any other unfinished business?
I'll look at it later. I got some things for unfinished business. Is that all right?
Sure.
Was there anything else, or is it, can I go? I'm just thinking about things to add to, I think, agenda items. Is that okay? Is this, does that fit here?
Maybe under new business?
Would that be new business?
Yes.
All right. That's true, 'cause I haven't started it yet. How can it be unfinished?
We're, we're under new business now, Kevin. Did you have something you wanted to?
He does. His name is right there at eight point one.
That's right.
It says budget process.
Yeah, I got something, I got four things in addition to that. These all came up tonight for me. One is building off, riffing off of Mary's thing with data, and I think, I think this is right on. We just finished the NWA's, right? So back up, actually, I got a question this, to sort of satiate my ignorance here. The agenda, is there a rhyme and reason to the way the agenda's organized? Is there?
Infinitum. It's been that way everywhere.
It can change.
That's right.
Okay.
It's a policy item. It's in our policy book. This is how it's set up.
So if we want to change it then?
We'd have to change the policy.
But it is, I mean, it certainly could be changed.
Gotcha. That's my question. So there will be, so I'm gonna run these, these by, 'cause one of it is, I'm wondering for the next, on the next agenda, maybe it goes on a new business, but the NWA's just got finished. And there's, here's an excellent opportunity for maybe us to practice kind of what I had in mind. So what I would recommend is, by then, within the next month, could we have a report of the NWA? And what I'd like to do is to, someone else can, or I'm more than happy to engage us in a simple data-driven dialogue, where more than, I'm not, less interested in receiving a report, I'm more interested in processing and thinking about what the data means.
So we would call that a workshop?
I don't know the semantics, so if that's a.
Workshop to discuss the NWEA scores.
Is that a separate thing from the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause for me, workshop is it's separate from the meeting.
You want it as an agenda item.
I want it as an agenda item.
Do you have an outcome? Here, here's the question. What is your anticipated outcome from the discussion of the NWA's? Are you looking at having a discussion about data-related?
I have multiple outcomes. So one outcome would be to actually process the, the data. I could see, so I'd like to see an outcome, one outcome would be a, a new way of looking at data. The other one would be is, we might, as a group, I don't know who could be inclusive of this. Is this something that can, would it just be us at the table where as, there could be outcomes of the data that would influence practice and/or policy. So I could see those sorts of things. I don't know. But typically what we get are reports and we, we take in information and it's purely, we consume. But I think this would have the opportunity to.
So you could suggest policy, then the policy committee would write the policy.
Maybe policy, it could be recommendations about practice. It could be.
That's fine.
So that would be.
Procedures which wouldn't have to be a policy necessarily.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know what necessarily the outcomes would be, but I, the, I would, putting it the way you said, at least a discussion of what the data mean.
So first, let's get some data in next meeting, at the next meeting, and put it under new business.
Correct. But again, the intent would be not just to receive the data and, and sort of say yai nai, just to. There's actually protocols that are out there that I wouldn't get.
Well, you can teach us. You teach us.
I'd be happy to do that.
What else you got?
No, I definitely am.
Say amen.
Okay, so there's one.
Maybe I can work, we can work together and brainstorm how we want to spit this data out, how we want to organize.
I'd be happy to do that.
Grade level, scores.
Yep, definitely, I definitely would have some ideas on what would be a good, nice way to package it.
All right.
And it's, yeah, are you familiar with the, well, you, you go onto the NWA reporting and such? I'd be happy to sit down in it, 'cause it's, create the crystal reports or.
And another thing I do is I export the doc, the data into a form where I can import it into InfiniCampus. And then from there, I can also then spit it out.
Okay, maybe we sit down and, that'd be, that'd be good. I don't want it to be time-consuming.
One way or another, we start collecting that data in InfiniCampus anyway, so.
So that, so if that helps propel that, that would be wonderful. But I think it's good to look at who's, three ways to look at it is, students, you can look at based upon, are they within the norms, are they below, or are they above? And way more useful than the stuff you get on the report card. The other piece of data, maybe not this time, is were we expecting data from the ASC committee in regards to the, do we have any data in regards to the implementation of that bus? I don't, I don't recollect. I think it's still early for that, right?
Yeah, October.
We have to wait until the bus has been running for a couple of months in the fall.
We said we'd do it mid-October.
That's what I said. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, right now there isn't any, there isn't a bus, so.
There's no data?
No data.
Good. So, so maybe the NWA, that would be good.
That's an easy line to fill out.
That is. So the other one is, do we have a yearly calendar for us as a board? For example, budget process, calendar, things like that. As a new member, I'm still confused about what should happen when. It'd be nice, when would be a good time? It sounds like we're beginning to transition from one year to the next. I don't know when that.
I think we should, and I think that should also include things like the date when, if it's a day, a year for negotiations, when negotiation should be started, as well as when the budget process should be started.
When should we start getting reports? When do we do calendar?
We should have a workshop. We could have it in August before the year starts up.
Yeah, I don't know when, but.
When things are slow and quiet.
Yeah, and develop our own, and develop our own.
I don't know. I'm trying to think when is a solid.
Well, I'm asking now because I didn't know if we need to maybe start setting some things up before the school year ends, when we have more people here.
Do you have a calendar of events?
That's exactly what I want.
All right, but we also do.
What we could do is share a Google Calendar with each other. A school board Google Calendar. One of you guys can be, you know, the owner of it and share it amongst the school board.
Yeah, I would like that, but I would like a sheet though, in the sense of these are key things we know that repeat year to year to year. And they're benchmarks on, so that I know when I'm sitting here like, oh my gosh, we're getting, we've got.
Well, we missed. Well, we missed out on certain benchmarks, okay? We should have had a board, um, goal-setting workshop, and that would have put everything in place through, for the year. And so we need to do that, and that's what I'm saying, in August, I think, might be the best.
But I also, Kevin, though, before the school year ends, I need to know what your expectations are for school board meetings, even over the summer. I need to know, as I look to my calendar, open house and events that happen at school.
I wonder if June's a better time to do it.
All right, well, June, but it has to be a workshop, not in a meeting. Just quick sit-down workout, you know, you come in mind with what goals you want for the year.
You're talking about two different things.
So I guess that's my, again, my ignorance here, 'cause again, this is my newness showing through, so thanks for educating.
I think we can, I think we can, that's not your newness showing through.
That's nothing to do with it.
This loop's not showing.
No.
Thank, I'm glad. That would make for interesting a public call.
I think what we need to do is to write down all the responsibility, what you're talking about is to put all the responsibilities that the board has throughout the year in a scheduled format, so that we know when, when negotiations start, when budget process starts.
Evaluations.
When evaluations are due, when our, um, meetings with Sanford should take place at the high school and also with the board. And kind of put all those things together, so that we've got a. Put it on paper, so that, I mean, they, they happen, but you're right, the hap hasn't.
So, so one thing I don't understand and clarifying is, can you not do workshop-y things during a school committee meeting?
Sure you can, sure.
You can, but sometime it's.
Well, then it goes longer and stuff like that.
We're trying to just do the business at a meeting.
I got you. Which, that makes fine sense for me. And I wonder, and this is why, goes back to my agenda question, if we do have that, I see that as being a repeating agenda item, because it's something that always changes. So it's always something that can be modified or things get added to it. So having it on the agenda makes sure that we give it its due diligence. So that's my second one.
So the agenda item would be, what would, what would it be?
Um.
Checking the.
Calendar review.
Calendar, calendar reviews.
Calendar, yeah, review the calendar of events, making sure that we are on track. Um, so is that a workshop?
Yeah.
So we have, do we have to schedule the workshop?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Do we do that now?
Sure.
And the last thing I need is another day to do something, but.
Not a day, it's an evening, and we, we should only take a short period of time.
Shouldn't be a real co.
No, I don't think so either.
Because everybody can do their brainstorming before they come and kind of look back after.
Right.
Summer or?
Maybe the week of June 17th.
That's graduation.
Graduation is 17th, is this the night of the 17th?
Monday.
Monday. So the last day of school is the 18th?
Okay. It's good to know.
Is the 18th a good day, probably?
I'm flexible in the afternoon. Um, the 19th is a teacher workshop day.
I won't be here on the 19th.
I propose the 18th in the afternoon.
Like what afternoon?
What?
Like what time afternoon?
I don't know, I was just getting it started. I want to pick a time.
Well, how is your 18th? Tell us.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm empty, that's why I'm like, I'm, I'm getting.
No, you're not empty.
It is the only day in June, that is blank. Rich, can you, can you bet?
See one down here.
Well, that's Saturday.
Well, that's.
You're right.
Actually, you know, this, this isn't something necessarily, 'cause I know it's the, it's a teacher workshop day, correct?
On the 19th.
On the 19th. It, it's school's still in session. This is something that we could do as a board. We wouldn't necessarily have to.
No, yeah.
Have the principal.
Yeah, we don't need everybody, all administrators.
We don't need everybody else.
Not that, you know.
This is something we can just do ourselves as a board.
You can find out about it afterwards.
And then we can then get it for review and feedback from. 18th work for, um, two o'clock?
Two.
I don't think so.
One o'clock?
Three.
Well.
Morning?
You know, we want to be, but, well, we want to, I mean, people work. And you do too, at other days.
That's true.
It just happens to be your free day.
I know, so if that is evening, I can do evening.
So, we do it at six o'clock or what?
We could do 12 noon and do a lunch.
Well, Richard can't come.
Richard can't be here.
Why, what time can you get here? It's the earliest.
He's off Monday. Oh, you're busy Monday.
My schedule's changed.
Oh, for the good?
I think so, but I'm getting up here in six hours to go back to work, so I'm ready to go home.
All right, so tell us.
It would be, it would be helpful, it would be helpful to me if we had it in the evening, 'cause I have.
Okay, well, that's what you gotta say.
I have caregivers at home from five to eight, so.
Works for me.
All right, 6:00 PM. Tuesday, the 18th. And then I hit the done button.
School board calendar.
Is that, is that something that the administrative team can attend if they'd like?
They can attend.
They're open, they're open.
It's open to the public.
So it needs to be posted?
Yep.
Posted as a workshop.
We'll say six to eight, just in case.
Six to eight.
June 14th. No.
No, 18th.
Geez, no wonder why you were free. He screwed up his June calendar.
Just do, oh, no.
This is 2013, not 12.
Well, so what day are you offered, you know?
Saturdays and Sundays.
Oh, you are?
Ah, normal working.
Well, good.
Been sixteen years, so.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
I had one more.
All right.
Sorry.
Lay it on us.
Um, so, um, no, hold off on that one. Uh, when, this is kind of related to, but now this is more for the, um, maybe this goes back to the strategic planning committee. But I'm wondering, going back to the data piece, and I'm kind of throwing this out there maybe just for rumination among pretty much all the directors here. What I wonder, again, rather than be purely just consumer, if we want the C to go to an A, not to say that's the only benchmark, but just to put it in that context, you have to constantly look at data and what are our goals and are we meeting the goals? So I'm wondering if there could be a shift in the reports for next year, where rather, in addition to just being reporting, it could be, and I'm saying this now because it's at the end of the year, which is probably a good time, what might be for each of the departments, and there might be more, goals for the year, but actual measurable goals, so that way the reports are a periodic check-in on how are we progressing towards our goals. Rather than just a, a review of activities that have taken place, which is good and informative, it's not strategic. And the only way you're gonna meet goals like A, or this number of students in the, does not meet, whatever the goals are, you gotta have them front and center all the time, and we need to periodically be checking our progress. So that would be a recommendation.
So for next year, administrative reports will include progress on individual goals as well as updates on activities.
If, but that's what I'm recommending, but in order for that to happen, then there needs to be an opportunity for goals to be set.
Yeah.
And that, that needs, that perhaps is a workshop, or there's, I don't know, there needs to be some prep work.
I, yeah, I mean, may I speak?
Mm-hmm.
I think that we talked, our next step in the vision and the mission is to, to develop a strategic plan, but I think we need to do that as a group and not.
As a commit, as a, as a committee.
Yeah, as a committee and not individually, because it needs to all.
Which is why right now, 'cause I know the strategic planning is happening, so if this could be a part of that, that, these things can dovetail and mutually support each other. But I know, now that I'm starting to get a sense of how things work, I would see that being even more effective.
So just a report, even a report on our strategic plans?
That might be, hence my question, but so maybe during a, a future workshop, and maybe at that calendar meeting, we can look at, maybe that can be an additional item for that workshop, is we can look at our calendar events and maybe look at modifying maybe the agenda, protocol, policy. That's it for now. I'm done. Thank you for indulging me.
Did you have something on the budget process that was on here, or was that just a?
Andy.
Oh, that's next, yeah. I'm still up?
Yes.
All right, I actually have a sheet here. So, I don't know who, I'm sure everybody. And perhaps we can use this in our meeting. So are you guys familiar with plus delta?
Mine's blank.
Yours blank? Did they?
I thought you were drawing a blank.
So you want this sheet, there's a blank sheet, it's a blank sheet you don't need. I didn't pay attention. It was just that one. So for me, what I would find really helpful, this doesn't have to take a long time, and maybe that we can collect it, but it would be good to have a little conversation is, in regards to the budget process, just throughout it all, my own sense was that things could have run smoother. So what a plus delta is, is a way to sort of process, a process, and to see what changes could be made to improve things next time. And basically, the plus is a, a record of what we thought well, so that we can replicate it, and the delta refers to what we would want to change. So I'm wondering is if we give each other maybe 60 seconds, maybe jot some ideas down?
Now?
I don't, well, I don't know what, this is, this is the conversation I'd like to have, is this better somewhere? I don't, it doesn't have to happen now, I just want to have it.
Probably would be better to bring to the workshop.
What about if we take these home?
Bring it back next time and then have a conversation.
Bring it back to, uh, to our.
To the workshop session.
To the workshop session or to our, uh, June meeting, either one?
I'm not too sure.
I think the workshop, we could discuss this.
Workshop session.
Process, which you need to.
I'd like to do that.
Workshop.
Um, I think it's gonna be real important to make sure that, um.
I think more than us need to be a part of.
Andy? No, I'm gonna make another.
Carleen's gonna make copies. So we want.
I can send them.
So, so for this.
The goal is, the goal is to have the board members complete this.
Well, I think it would, I think in this case, I think in this case, the administrative team also needs to complete this part.
Because this is in reflection of the budget at this point. The budget process.
Budget process. We can do this for other things as well, but I think this is.
Topic, action, school budget?
We just finished it, it should be fresh in our minds, um, and we had a successful outcome. I think we, everybody deserves praise on that, but I think, you know, it, it can always go smoother, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Getting these back to Kevin before the next meeting, so that he could actually look at what we respond to.
Before the, um, workshop?
I'm amenable to that.
So you can compile the data.
Say it again?
We'll just scan them and email them to you.
I'll do that. So when are these?